At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for August 28th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
City Clerk Deaton, please let the roll call show all council members are present. And we'll move on to the approval of city council minutes August 14th, 2023. Councilmember Kennedy.
I move the minutes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of agenda. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'd like to go ahead and add a new business item number three, storm discussion, to the agenda for tonight's meeting. And I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We have no consent agenda this evening, so we'll move on to the celebration of our good friend and proclamation of Bob's Barbershop. Whereas, small businesses have shaped our communities, embodied the entrepreneurial spirit, and become pillars of our economy. Whereas, Bob's Barbershop opened for business in 1993 at 111 East Lake Street, near the corner of Lake and Lafayette Streets, in the heart of downtown South Lyon, and has been there for the past 30 years. Whereas, Bob's Barbershop is praised by customers time and again for their attention to detail, friendly, professional, and knowledgeable staff. And whereas, the success of many small businesses is due to, in part, to others who helped along the way, and coworkers such as Carol Taylor, who became a crucial part of daily operations. Whereas, Bob's Barbershop has been an important, caring part of the community, contributing to many causes and needs without hesitation. And where now, therefore, I, Daniel L. Pelchat, Mayor of the City of South Lyon, on behalf of the city council and the entire community, offer congratulations to Bob's Barbershop for their many years of business in the South Lyon community. Now, no pressure, but we're going to open the floor for public comment if anyone would like to speak.
Do I have to go up here?
Yep. Just state your name and address. Yep.
My name is Taylor Swift, and my tickets are on sale. No. Actually, I just wanted to say thanks for the town for accepting me and taking me in way back when I came back in '83, '84? Hell, I can't even remember anymore. But I thought that when I first started to work out there, it was only going to be a short stop, you know, that I was going to go back to Lansing. And this town sucked, man, I'm telling you. And I've loved serving you people, and I just love the town. And the thing that bums me out is that I just retired. So I'm not around anymore, and I see these people coming on Facebook and everything and telling me how I've changed their lives for some of them and everything, and I feel it's just the same way for me. And it's really sad to say goodbye, but at the same time, I feel really good about retiring and going out on a good note. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we'll open the floor for public comment for everyone else. Please remember to state your name and address and our two-minute time limit.
Hi, Jennifer Donegan, 216 East Lake Street. You guys know it is Christmas house. I wanted to express my disapproval for the 6:12 meeting where there was the Pumpkin Fest extended to the East Lake Street past Wells Street, which is right in front of my second lot there. There's, when Pumpkin Fest came in, no one came to us to have us, to get approval from my husband or myself. I talked to Kathy Swan today and said, you know, why didn't you guys let us know so that we can give us our, give input, which would have been negative? She stated that she called a phone number that's no, that could no longer be in existence, but did not contact my husband or myself. There's many ways that we could have been contacted as the residents that are affected by this extension. My husband is, you probably see him outside every single day working on that lot, keeping our house pretty for the city. So basically, what this creates is you have the Pumpkin Fest coming in front of my house and beside, and beside the house. So I'm very concerned about the traffic going across that lot. That is a liability. You know, if anybody trips, gets hurt, that comes on me. Is there any way that either the city's insurance can extend to that? I don't know if extends to personal property. Or if we could move that back to where it was originally supposed to be, which is, based on the footprint, it was supposed to end at Wells. The only reason it got extended, there's a tiny little clause in here, and you guys might have even missed this when you were going through the consent agenda. So to make matters a little bit more difficult, I'm going to call out Paul a little bit on this, because Kathy had said that this extension had been in the works for several months. So over several months, nobody contacted Ralph or I. We are easy to get ahold of. It could have been a letter, a formal letter to us, not just, you know, like I said, you could have knocked on our door, anything could have happened. So that was, hopefully, if there's a way to get insurance, I don't know if that's the case, but wanted to make sure that everyone understood that we are definitely not in favor of that being in front of our house. We're not against Pumpkin Fest. We don't want to be the fun police and tell people, get off my lawn. But again, there's going to be a lot of traffic, and we would have liked to have been asked before this was, decision was made.
Thank you.
Larry Ledbetter, 11343 Clovis Point. I'm here representing the Historical Society and promoting Depot Day again this year, September 9th, 2023. And part of the big excitement of this is that 50 years ago, there was no depot, there was no museum. It was a cornfield, according to Mr. Norm Summers, and they dug up a big hole and buried a time capsule 50 years ago. So Philip Wipert and I started looking for it. Well, I got to back up a little bit. It was Carl Richards who pestered me incessantly about finding this time capsule. And he kept after me for very many, many months. And finally, he was able to somehow get a state representative with a ground-penetrating radar to come out, because he was there when they buried it, and he knew the general area. And sure enough, between the water plant and the freight house in the little dirt area, that's where they found it. And so it was marked, and Phil Wipert and I started digging up with shovels, and we hit it. It was concrete. We were expecting to find a little tiny box, but it was a great big concrete box, a very big one, about 500 pounds worth, and it was heavy. So with the help of Jay Powell and Abaco, we dug it up, and we have it now. It's stored at the DPW yard, and it's going to be opened up at 2:30 on September 9th. And we're going to find out what's inside of it and put it on display. And we're not sure where we're going to put all the display. It might be at the library, or at the, or at the Historical Society, or maybe here at City Hall. So we haven't worked out the details on that. But the big excitement for me is that 50 years from now, it will be the 200th celebration of South Lyon. So we're encouraging everybody in the community that wants to be part of this to come up with items to put in the, the new time capsule, which will hopefully be the same old times capsule, if we can use it over again, or we may have to make adjustments. But we want to get a lot of activity going. I've been encouraging the churches to put stuff in, the American Legion, the Boy Scouts, a lot of different people I've been talking to. But we want to get the community excited about this and part of it, because in 50 years, there will be digging up, and who knows what the City of South Lyon will look like? Will everybody be driving hovercrafts with helipads at their homes on their 50-story buildings that they're living in? Who knows what South Lyon will look like in 50 years? It probably will be amazing. So we want people to be optimistic about the future and to get excited about the present. So hopefully, I'm getting here to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter.
As all of you know, parts of our wonderful city have lost power one or more times in the past week. Power outages are not just an inconvenience, they can disrupt business, spoil foods, cause flooding and sanitation issues, and most importantly, it can adversely affect people who use medical equipment. Last week's power outages are not an isolated incident. There have been multiple outages that have happened in the past year. Because of this, I kindly request that the City of South Lyon, surrounding municipalities and DTE consider what can be done beyond tree trimming that can be, that can create resiliency in our electrical system. For example, identifying common points of failure, creating redundant feeder lines and/or burying lines that serve more than 100 customers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the floor for public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown with DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So first up, I want to touch on the Social District again quickly. They should be, actually be ready to pick up by Wednesday of this week, so the sign's been ordered, and they should be ready for pickup by Wednesday. So I'm going to be working with DPW, I mean, with the storm and everything, to see when we can get them up. I'm not sure what that's going to look like with all the work they have in front of them right now. So we have our second social media training that's going to be taking place this week. The, kind of the premise of this training is going to be, our businesses are going to be able to ask the trainer questions about the tools that she provided them with at the first training and get feedback on how to improve social media. Today, I was out speaking with some businesses downtown regarding the power outage. Some are still closed because they don't have internet, so they can't use their POS systems. But there was some pretty considerable losses, obviously, if you're going to be closed for four days. But I'm kind of putting a list together of what those losses were, and if there's any way that we can help to recoup some of those losses, we're going to be looking to see if we can do that. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to take a while for everybody to recover. I mean, not only residents, but the businesses as well. But luckily, our businesses, for the most part, didn't really have a lot of physical damage to them, just the power outage. And then, city staff also met with a company to discuss a branding refresh. So the idea is to spruce up the signage around town to, and to create cohesive branding for events, as well as the farmer's market. So when somebody sees an advertisement for Ladies' Night Out and/or the farmer's market, they'll immediately know the entity that is putting on the event, and that's just going to kind of create cohesion with the DDA and city events. We'll be seeking input from city council and the DDA board, as well as the community as the process develops. So the idea is to conduct this project in different phases so that we're able to get the best representation of the city. And then finally, I want to say congrats to Bob. He's been cutting my hair since I've been here, so, not anymore, but, yeah, but that's it. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Nate. Councilmember Dil.
Thank you. Couple things I wanted to say first. I know I mentioned it last time, but I have been talking to some of the other, some of the businesses, and actually been watching them online, and you can see a marked difference in some of the social media activity. Some very good videos and engagement. They're engaged, I've talked to a lot of businesses, said their engagement on social media is much higher, and they're getting reach in other places, which is really wonderful to hear. So that's very impressive. So whoever you got to run that training must be really good. And it was funny to listen to them also talk about how, you know, they were like, okay, this is what she said to do, and then we're going to do that, you know? So it's really kind of, it's, I really appreciate the enthusiasm that, that she put in to some of the advertising. And then also, I appreciate the, the brand cohesion that you're talking about. I think that'll be really helpful in people understanding sometimes what is a city event and what is not a city event. So I think that'll be very helpful. So that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy.
So Nate, I applaud you getting out, talking to the business owners and talking to them about the losses they incurred and so forth in the downtown area. Did you go out to the rest of the businesses in the city and talk to them in a similar manner, any of those businesses?
Not yet, but I plan on doing that this week still, so. Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for the update, Nate.
Thank you.
On to the Fire Chief Report with Chief Thorington.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We are currently at 897 instances. The flooding on the 23rd and the storm on the 24th has definitely increased the calls. At one point, we had pretty much all the department out on the streets with calls backed up. I will say that the DPW is pretty amazing with their response afterwards. I mean, police and fire did an amazing job too in the moment, but afterwards, over the weekend, the DPW did a great job, and the way they mobilized was impressive. We had four promotions in the last, since the last meeting. Zoe Nochel went from cadet to firefighter EMT. She took her firefighter one and two at Howell High School, and also EMT through high school. She just turned 18, so she's officially a firefighter now. She's pretty excited. Micah Meyer went from engineer to aerial pump operator. Alice Grant is also an engineer, aerial pump operator. And then Charlie Stanley is a former cadet. She's actually from Whitmore Lake. She's also just turned 18, has her classes through high school, and she's going to work for us as well, so she can come back to the department. On August 16th, we had our spray park. We had the one day in between all the cold that worked out pretty nice. We had a beautiful day for it, a great turnout, as well as the spray park. We had the school behind us, behind the parking lot there also had like 100 kids come over, so it was a really, really good turnout. There was a touching moment. A father of one of the kids at the spray park came up to us during the event. He told us that his son had significant difficulties in interacting socially with other kids. And at the spray park, that was the first time his son let him, put him down, and he ran with the kids and played in the water. His dad was like visibly moved by the interaction, so it was a pretty neat moment. And lastly, we were awarded a grant, $19,800, a federal grant for smoke detectors and smoke alarms and CO detectors. It's a 5% match, 95% federal. We'll be bringing that to you in the next council meeting for formal approval.
Anyone got anything for Chief?
Just thank you for, thank your, all your staff for what a great job everybody's doing.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the stability and keeping everybody calm and safe.
Thank you. Absolutely. I'll pass that along.
Thanks, Chief. Great update. Sorry, Councilmember Kibble.
I was seeing some of the younger guys, the new drivers and that, and I thought it was awesome that they're in, in lieu of what was going on downtown. They're still slipping right through and taking care of business. That was, nobody seemed like they were freaking out or anything, so that was pretty cool.
That's good. Yeah.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
On to the Police Chief Report, and Chief Baki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. Just got a few things tonight. We are still in the process of doing interviews for our new police officer's position. Thursday, we have another oral board scheduled, and I think we have one person on that oral board, cadet, or I'm sorry, potential hire. We have received most of our equipment for our new sidearms that we ordered. We are still waiting on the sites, and they should be in tomorrow, and then we can start assembling those and start training. So I'm hoping to have training started early next month. And there, I just wanted to comment on the hit-and-run that occurred in front of, in the downtown area. And then we put up on social media for the identity of the individual or anybody that knew what the truck, who drove the vehicle. I'm happy to say we have a good idea who was the driver, and I had an opportunity to speak with the victim. She is doing good. She is out of the hospital, and just, we just told her that if she needed anything, just let us know, but, but she's doing fine. I just want to make a comment, again, of these severe weather events that we had. It was an opportunity to see everybody in early morning hours on Friday, and it was a lot of devastation, right? Lot of trees down, lot of lines down. But what I did also see is individuals out already start helping. They're already moving things out of the way, they're checking on their neighbors. I had an opportunity to speak with several neighbors in the, in the area, and the first thing is like, hey, is everybody okay? Once we started establishing that, and our DPW crews and fire did a fantastic job about just a temporary cordon off the area, don't know if these wires are live or not working or working, so quick response, they did a great job. DPW had basically, I was talking to one individual, one of the neighbors in the area, basically had to walk to the DPW because it was just basically covered with all debris, tree, trees, and all these other things. They had to get in themselves and then clear the, clear the road out themselves just to start getting out to the parts of the city. So it was amazing job. And I know those guys are spent, but they're, they're, they're still doing it. So, so kudos to everybody, the first responders. Our officers responded pretty quickly as well, again, putting up temporary barricades to ensure that the safety of the motorists and the people out there walking the streets until these start getting mitigated by DTE and all these other outside contractors. So, and that's all I got.
Councilmember Dil.
I just thought of something when you were talking. We, I was signed up to get emergency notifications from, I can't remember what it's called.
Nixle.
Yeah, but I didn't get anything. Did you guys send stuff out during?
We made a Facebook post, and I believe we put out a Nixle alert afterwards. I'll have to check with, too, yeah, I have to check with my sergeant. So we can help you out with SARS, how it works. I know I.
Well, I mean, I used to get them all the time, and I just realized while you were talking that I didn't get one, so I'll have to check if maybe I fell off.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll talk with my social media person about that, but we definitely start putting things out. I know we put out some more communications in reference to self-reporting to Oakland County Emergency Services. So we're trying to just get all that data together, working with the county, so.
Councilmember Kibble.
Is there any chance, it seems as though Livingston has a much more active siren program than what Oakland County does. Obviously, Oakland County doesn't know that we're in Oakland County. Is there some way that we could coordinate more with them?
Well, thanks for asking that question. We have Tom Hardesty here from Oakland County Emergency Management, who'll field some of your questions, and we can, you'll be able, he'll be able to answer better than I will.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Chief? Great update. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
No unfinished business this evening, so we're on to new business number one, designation of street administrator.
Thanks, Mayor. In 2018, the city council approved a resolution naming the city manager as a street administrator for the City of South Lyon. After consideration of the responsibilities and duties of the DPW superintendent, I feel it's important that we designate the DPW superintendent as the new street administrator. I've attached for your resolution to the Michigan Department of Transportation for our new street administrator, and the possible course of action tonight is to approve or not approve the attached resolution, designating Jeff Archie, DPW superintendent, as the new City of South Lyon street administrator.
Councilmember Kennedy.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the resolution, designating Jeff Archie, DPW superintendent, as the new street administrator.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Hanson. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote?
Kurt Swile?
Yes.
Dillon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. New business number two this evening, use of city seal policy.
The City of South Lyon has been using its official South Lyon seal since at least early March of 1981. The seal is used to identify government services and programs provided, sponsored, or endorsed by the city. Over the past couple of years, we have identified individuals using our city seal on their website, Facebook pages, and other uses without permission. In order to regulate and restrict unauthorized uses and to limit the opportunity for individuals or organizations to profit or benefit from the use of our seal, we have developed this policy. The use of the city seal policy is intended to safeguard the city's seal, to ensure it's used properly, and provide notice to third parties that they must request permission for the city's city before they use the seal. The city would like to prevent confusion to the public from individuals using the seal for services and programs unrelated to the city. The policy is designated to help employees, elected officials, citizens understand the importance and proper use of the seal. We have already received approval from the State of Michigan, Licensing and Regulatory Affairs Division, and approval of our trademark and city seal. I've attached information tonight is the proposed City of Seal policy and the State of Michigan Licensing and Regulatory Affairs registration of the trademark or service mark. The possible course of action to approve or not approve the attached City Seal policy. You can always move this to another agenda, because this is the first time this has been out for discussion at tonight's meeting.
Myself and the city attorney would be happy to assist with the policy development, answering any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Kennedy.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the city seal policy.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Moser. Do we have any further discussion?
Just a quick question.
Councilmember Dil.
I just wonder, is there any actual weight we can put behind if somebody is using it and we ask them nicely to stop? Is there?
We feel there is. There are certain limitations, of course, through First Amendment rights, but I'm going to defer to the city attorney that may want to speak to some of these items further.
It would be a violation of the city policy.
Okay. That's all. Thanks.
Councilmember Kurt Swile, go ahead.
So I'd assume then that whoever is violating the policy would be sent probably a cease and desist, I mean, something like that. They would be sent a cease and desist, and so that'd be the first step. And if they are benefiting from the use of the city's seal, possibly sue them for recovery of the, sue them for damages, for the fraud that they may have committed out there in the public using the city's name to raise money or whatever.
Those are certainly options that the city could consider, yes.
Okay. I do know several years ago, can't recall the city, but I recall, it was one of the larger cities, Royal Oak, Novi, one of them, Troy, Rochester, where somebody had taken their city's seal and had put flyers together and attempted to raise funds off of that, saying it was a city-endorsed event, and it was for some project in the city. And it just happened to land at somebody on city council's door that said, I don't recall this being in our budget, so that's how they got caught. But, but it's out there, unfortunately, and I think it's smart to protect, protect the consumer, because that's who we're really protecting. We're protecting the residents and the consumers out there, and ensuring that our seals and assets are used in an appropriate manner, so.
Councilmember Kibble.
Okay. In the event that something comes up where you want to, say, I want to end up taking advantage of having the seal or some literature that's going to actually apply to an event or some cause for the city, so I go to Lisa, do I go to you?
It'd be coming to the city first, and then I'd be reviewing it with the attorney. If it felt that that needed to come before city council, I would do that, depending upon what its potential use may be. Could be, you know, one of hundreds of different things, but we'd have to evaluate those on a case-by-case basis.
Well, I mean, because, I mean, the road, the road monies, there was a number of us that were on there routinely, taking the seal simply to make sure that it was a valid push to try to end up getting people the understanding that if this millage doesn't end up going through, we're going to be in a very difficult position. And it didn't seem as though anybody was really scraping about what was going on at that time. So I'm, I'm just, if I don't, I guess I haven't seen all the outside activities that have been taking place with this, but outside of concerts in the park and something like that, road millage, I haven't seen anybody using it except for the stuff that we put in our packets, so, that's all I had. Thanks.
City Attorney, I might go ahead.
I just want to clarify that this is a city policy. So it will primarily apply to city employees, officials. It is a policy at city, and generally, it applies to the city. employees, officials. It is a policy at city and generally it applies to the city. I just wanted to clarify. You can still take those actions, Councilmember Kurt Swil, but I just wanted to clarify that this would be a city policy.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Moser. If no one has anything else, City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote?
Dill?
Sure.
Moser?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. New business number three this evening was added, just general storm discussion.
If Councilman Kennedy requests the addition, I could start out with maybe describing some of the items that have occurred and then introduce the Director of Emergency Operations for Oakland County. They could perhaps give a better update on activities if you're okay with that. Yeah, I think that'd be great. You had to do it. Yeah, we really wanted to update on, it's a good update on the storm and everything that had taken place with the city of South Lyon, the high winds that came through and caused damage last week. And it was, as was discussed with emergency response people, you know, personally thank the city staff, DPW, water and sewer office, police, fire, residents, business owners, the people who came together, specifically Oakland County Emergency Management Personnel, County Executive's Office, the township, the governor's office, contacting us, state police, different local representatives, United States representatives that contacted us, American Red Cross, asking what kind of help that they could possibly give the city of South Lyon after we declared the state of emergency last week. As was mentioned by our police chief, the public really came together and helped debris cleanup and took a lot of time talking with individuals. The staff was working with them and still out there today, as well as they'll be out there for the next couple of days gathering information for the damage assessment, what had occurred, to see possibly what kind of assistance we can possibly get. The governor today expanded the state of emergency to the city of South Lyon, which potentially can provide us access for funding and other sources for assisting our community. It's going to take a little bit of time for the city to get back to some normal operations of the city. So, when you start to see the grass start to get a little bit long, you start to see some maintenance items not being addressed. It's not that we're not going to be doing these things. It's just that we have employees that are working, you know, some 12-hour days and long weekends and overtimes at nighttime, trying to remove debris and material and still trying to make sure that we maintain safe and city operations. So, please be conscious of that. The DTE reported that there were 35 poles that were snapped within the community, which was pretty excessive. Most people know that half the town was without power for a few days and then we still have sporadic outages right now. The majority of the power has been restored. There's still 10-mile roads that's closed. We made contacts again with DTE regarding that. And there's also another pole that is actually owned, operated by AT&amp;T, which is being worked on this evening. We've received confirmation late this afternoon to take care of that. The DPW building received severe damage. Maybe some of those pictures and videos were actually circulated out there. The building roof completely blew off. There were several cars that were southeast of there that were damaged by trees falling on them, houses and buildings that were completely knocked down, building, you know, a building, a commercial building was almost imploded, just completely, completely collapsed. The individuals, you know, have been reporting information through Oakland County Emergency Management on the self-reporting website and plus staff was, our fire department personnel and office staff was circulating with Oakland County Emergency Management Personnel, gathering additional data today. And like I said, they'll be doing that again tomorrow to expand the assessment of what had taken place. Emergency Management Personnel also did a drone over the area. They had the videos and still photography to actually see the damage. And as Chief Baki had mentioned, there was a lot of cleanup that was already done within the area, which was, which was amazing how quickly some of those things started to happen. The residents started to get out there with their chainsaws, removed debris. Employees, you know, came through and were clearing the streets, you know, were trying to get the operations of, you know, with what's within the right of way for public utilities, for fire hydrants being cleared. So, helping with that was definitely something that everybody, you know, kind of chipped in and took care of. But I asked Tom Hardesey from Oakland County Emergency Management to come here today and he's going to can kind of answer some questions you may have or maybe even provide a little bit further update on what had transpired and maybe even discuss some of the issues related to the siren also, if it's okay with the council.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As you mentioned, I am the Director of Emergency Management, Homeland Security for Oakland County, also the appointed Emergency Management Coordinator for the county by the county executive. A few different things that our office is responsible for. One of those is assisting communities in planning for response, recovery to disasters. I will say off the top, one of the things that was very clear is that the city manager and his public safety team didn't just respond well. Clearly, they had prepared well. That's what leads to a great response. I would love to say that every time something happens, police, fire, DPW, water, city manager are all a cohesive team, but they're not. It doesn't always work that way. It only works that way with preparation. And it was very clear that this team was prepared and responded that way. One of the other items that our office is responsible for is the outdoor warning sirens. So, I wanted to take a moment, you are correct, the sirens did not go off in Oakland County, and I wanted to take a moment to explain what our criteria are and why they did not go off here when they did go off in other counties. So, we are a county that activates the sirens countywide. We do that for several reasons. The first of which is a tornado warning issued by the National Weather Service. So, if they issue a warning, we immediately activate the sirens. Whenever there's even potential storms, we have someone who's on call 24 hours, seven days a week, monitoring the weather. We have a backup system with building safety monitoring the weather. So, they're monitoring that. So, if there's a tornado warning, immediately the sirens are activated. The other reasons are for a sustained winds of in excess of 70 miles an hour or a tornado that touches down within 10 miles of the border and is moving towards Oakland County. So, Livingston County, yes, they activated their sirens for a tornado that had happened some distance away, more than 10 miles. Our staff was monitoring it. Our staff was on the phone with the National Weather Service in White Lake because we're paying attention as well. We're seeing it in Livingston. We're seeing it in Wayne. And we're frankly anticipating that we're going to be activating in Oakland. But none of those conditions were ever met for Oakland County. So, that's the reason we didn't activate the sirens. I know you mentioned NICSOL. We also have a countywide alert system that will alert for storm warnings, which is that step below a tornado warning. That's an opt-in system. That's another means of notification, weather radios. But I can assure you, it's not because we don't know where South Lyon was or how it lies. The reality is, we've seen these more often in outlying areas. We were talking about it in the office today. Often, it's Holly area where that warning seems to just touch that corner of the county and we are activating the sirens for the whole county. And we do reemphasize that they're outdoor warning sirens. Their purpose is, is not to hear in the house, but people who are outside, they're boating, they're on the beach, they're playing golf, they're walking or something where they're, they don't, might not have another way to get warnings. So, that's indicating for them to seek shelter and seek more information, whether that's the TV, the radio, the phone, an emergency radio, some other system to try to get updates, to get more information as to what's happening. I did want to touch base on the emergency declaration. So, part of what we do when we, when we talk to the city, you declared an emergency, then I take that information to the county executive. We recommended to him that we, we take that up to the state and say, yes, we concur. This is a disaster for South Lyon, asking for state resources. There are kind of two things that could happen from there. One, the governor could declare and agree with that, which she did today. The next will be all of this information for not just South Lyon, but for the entire area will get sent to the White House for review for a federal presidential declaration. That's why there will be a little bit pause with some funding because only one of those two things can happen for public funding. If there is a presidential declaration, by law, state money can't come to assist with the incident. If there's not a presidential declaration, then the South Lyon could be eligible for state funding, up to $250,000 for, that's called public assistance, meaning police, fire, DPW, overtime, damage to city, those kinds of things. Individual assistance for people only comes during, after a presidential declaration and only with very certain high standards even after that, separate from public assistance. So, with that, I'll answer whatever questions I can about what we're continuing to do and how we can help going forward.
First off, I just want to say thank you for being here and taking the time to walk us through that. I mean, I think a lot of us had a little bit of a grasp on that, but hearing it laid out like that makes a lot more sense. We're going to get to everybody. Councilmember Dill, I saw your hand go up first. We'll start there and we'll just kind of work our way through.
First, I want to say I really appreciated you calling me this weekend when you knew I was upset when I was speaking with our county commissioner. I, I just, I know it sounds funny to, for people, for us to say it's, you know, nobody knows that we're in Oakland County, but just so that you understand the frustration, that we do feel like we're hanging out here sometimes. And, and I know that you say that the alarm is for people who are outside, but people are making life and death decisions based on if they're alerted. And, you know, it happened, I lost electricity very quickly, lost Wi-Fi and I couldn't get a signal at all on my phone. So, I opened my window during a storm to listen for an alarm. So, I think that, I just, I know we talked about it, but I just wanted you to understand that a little bit and I just, I appreciate, really appreciate you coming here to talk with us about it more. It feels like there was somehow a miss because clearly the damage that we had was significant. So, if there's any way that during these discussions that we can have something, maybe, you know, throw out some ideas of could we have a west Oakland siren or something so that we maybe at least feel like we're not left out hanging? That's all.
Well, and I don't want to think, you to think that just because the data we had didn't reach the siren activation level, that that doesn't mean it wasn't a serious incident. Clearly, it was. Clearly, there's significant damage and impact to your community. So, I don't want to minimize that either. That's why we reached out to South Lyon the day after, along with every other city in the county, because that, that's our role to help large and small. So, that's why we did that. So, I don't want to minimize that. I would agree with you. Each year, we, we do talk about and reevaluate, is there, do we now have better systems where we can activate parts of the county versus all? To date, we've erred on the side of warning everyone because we'd rather, to be honest with you, I get more emails or calls about why did you hit the sirens and it was sunny by my house? But we've decided to err on the side of caution of hitting them more often than not, but we're always open to reevaluating and how we can improve.
That would be great. Because obviously, you know, it could be a tornado here and not, and not even raining in Pontiac.
Absolutely. It's a big county.
Yeah. So, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. And call and talk to me this weekend.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Kurt Swil, then I'll come back to you, Councilwoman Hanson.
Yes, I would also like to agree with Councilwoman Duke on clearly congratulating you and thanking you for the promptness that you have provided to the city. So, please extend my thank yous back to whoever at the county and we appreciate it. I too would like to focus a little bit on the siren issue. I just want to make sure that I understand. What you're saying is, is that one flick of the switch and it activates the whole county. So, you are unable to regionalize or isolate that siren to an area of the county that is specifically in a threatening environment?
We have made a policy decision quite a while ago to activate them all because it's, we can't, I'm not confident enough that I can just notify one little area and that's going to be the only area of danger. If the threshold is met of a tornado warning or sustained winds in somewhere in Oakland County, then we activate that. And as I said, then the idea is to seek some, especially people that are outdoors, maybe they're not close to shelter. They might need some time to get there. Weather moves quickly and then that they, they get indoors and then seek more information. So, we've, we've made a policy decision. Again, it's, it's time. Our person is there trying to evaluate the White Lake tornado, for example, from a couple of years ago. That tornado was touching down when we got notice. So, to try to take time to say, okay, do we draw a polygon? No. Hit the button, get the, the warning out. And then the worst that happens is somebody that's not close to it hears the siren go off and says, what is that? I need to find out if that's for me. So, that's been our decision. We didn't not activate the sirens because it was on the west side of the county. We didn't activate the sirens because the threshold to activate them anywhere for Oakland County were not met.
So, are you saying that you do not have the ability to regionalize the siren in a location that clearly is targeted by threatening weather?
I'm saying I don't think we could do it quick enough that it's faster for us to notify everybody. Could we take a few minutes to do that? Yes, but I don't want my staff to take a few minutes to warn people. That's too long during a tornado.
Okay. Well, then maybe we need to discuss the threshold because maybe the threshold is too high. Because clearly, when you go through the town, there's extensive damage. And all I heard all weekend was, I didn't hear the siren. I wasn't sure how serious it was. How can you not go through the city and see how serious that storm was? So, you have your average person sitting in that house trying to make a decision, do I go into the basement, do I hide, or do I just sit here and, you know, finish cooking dinner and it's just another nasty storm? The importance of that siren, I think, is demonstrated by the damage done in the city by that storm. Look around the city and that should tell you, your threshold is too high. I, I'm telling, it's too high. When you have property damage where a roof is blown off of a building, where people can't access roads, major roads, when lines are down, when there is no electricity on the streets for people to get out in the evening and see how bad it is, those are dangerous situations to be in. If I had heard a siren, I would not have gone outside and looked around. I would have stayed in because I would have understood the severity of the system. So, me personally, I was looking, I'm not a weather person, but I was looking at data myself and I saw on Channel 4, I think it was Channel 4, that said tornado warning and I heard no sirens at all. That warning was out there on TV.
It was not for Oakland County, ma'am. We were on the phone with the weather service and we have followed up. We even went back to the weather service after and we shared with them the aerial photos, the footage, asked them to reevaluate their data and say, could you please reexamine this and make sure that there was not a tornado here? And they have come back to us and said, no, there was not a tornado. Now, that, again, I'm not minimizing what happened here. There, there is significant damage and clearly there were some strong, what are likely, and I'm not a weather person either, likely straight-line winds. But there was no tornado warning issued for Oakland County.
But the sirens should not just, again, for discussion, that maybe the siren system should not just be for a tornado. Maybe that siren system, that's what I'm talking about, needs, that threshold needs to be lowered a little bit so that threatening weather that has the potential, and clearly, when you looked at the radar, you could see that was a nasty, ugly storm coming this way. So, why those sirens weren't going off, you know, I get it, we didn't meet the threshold, but I think it's time to reevaluate that because the problem is, is just going by your threshold potentially could have, could have jeopardized lives because you weren't getting that siren out. And that siren, do you know where the siren is on the southern part of the city? Do you know where it's located?
I couldn't tell you the exact spot. No, have I looked at our maps to see what coverage is here? Yes, but I don't know the exact location.
Okay. Well, it, it's on the southern end. The problem is, is that that siren not only takes care of southern Oakland County and South Lyon, but that siren also reverberates into the Salem Township area into Washington County. So, the relevance of lowering that threshold would have helped people down in that northern part of Washington County that live in Salem. They also experienced damage. They didn't hear any sirens at all. They didn't hear any sirens at all, but the bad weather was up here, but they got hit. That would be my argument, to take a look at lowering the threshold, maybe during times where you have a lot of wild weather, maybe you don't need it in the spring, I don't know. But somewhere, there is a discrepancy in that data and you calculating that threshold, because damage was done and people should have been warned by a siren.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Hanson.
I definitely want to thank you for being here. I very much appreciate you coming and speaking with us, especially what's pretty fresh in all of our minds, having been through the past five days or so. You mentioned that we did a pretty good job as far as our first responders and DPW and such. Is, it just occurs to me that this summer has felt, especially with the spring, starting out with a lovely ice storm and whatnot, it has felt like this sort of weather is something that we are going to be faced with going forward. And it, you know, we've had a pretty bad storm almost every single month, leading up to last week, which was two bad storms back to back.
Yes.
And it, it just feels to me that we need to be more proactive. And I would ask you, it, you know, though we did a pretty decent job last week, and thank heavens our, our first responders, as well as the DPW, were able to work together along with city staff and DTE, but are there any recommendations that maybe the county can propose to us so that we are even better prepared and proactive to take on these sorts of storms that are kind of becoming the new norm? Now, maybe this isn't the forum to discuss all those sorts of recommendations, but I, I wasn't sure if maybe your office, along with our police, fire, and city manager can maybe work together to see where we might have some shortfalls and then, you know, be prepared next time around, even more.
Every one of these events is a learning, both, both the training sessions and the real, they never go 100% perfect, and we always learn from them. Your police chief is your designated emergency management liaison with us. They might consider us the pest sometimes with programs, but they, they've been a great partner. I would agree with you, both when these happen, a good after-action review about what went well, and honest look at what we can improve, just like we're talking about with the weather, that we look at those every time and look at how we can improve. So I absolutely agree with you.
Thank you again for being here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
So could you give us, let's go through that background that you gave us and that 250,000 reimbursement. Could you go over that again, and who that's coming from, who it's for, what the maximum is? Is that per individual, per reference, total?
Yes, sir. So that, this, if it is only a state-declared emergency, not a federal emergency, the only, it's called public assistance, meaning really for government. So it's, it's not for individuals. So it's based on the size of the city. So for your size city, the maximum amount that you would be eligible to be reimbursed would be $250,000 for the city. There are some criteria that have to be met there. For example, it's that you have to have been out at least $30,000 or 1% of a departmental budget. I think you will easily exceed one of those. So that, that's kind of like a baseline, and that that amount of damage has to, that amount of cost to you has to come within the worst five-day period. Again, I think you'll meet that eligibility criteria pretty easily. So then with that, it gets into, and I'll provide some examples, it's not an all-inclusive list, but overtime for police, fire, DPW, people that were responding to the incident, it won't pay like to, let's say, a generator. It won't pay for the use of your generator that you already owned, but if that generator was damaged while you were using it during the storm, then it might cover that damage, and may cover fuel for that. Other costs that are over and above, that were specifically related to the storm. And it could be for some, for debris management and cleanup, again, for, for public, so where you're taking that debris from the road right away, not from people's lawns or those kinds of things. They get, they get very specific about public assistance versus private assistance. So there's actually the first, I, I shared with the city manager this evening, the state set a call for tomorrow, for, that I'll be on, and a representative from South Lyon will be on, where they start laying out some of the parameters for this, not just for South Lyon, but for all the communities in the state. They want to make sure that data and information is being collected properly, because they are, in particular, that there are certain rules and guidelines that have to be followed. One of the reasons that we were out here with the state police this morning and with city staff at nine o'clock is getting that damage assessment, just a, a good baseline overview of how widespread is that damage. That's important. That information was being fed up real time to the state. The governor is looking at that when she made her decision, and that information combined with all the other communities will go up to the White House when they make a decision on whether or not a presidential declaration is issued.
If the presidential declaration is issued, what comes about as a result of that?
So there are a couple different things that could come into play there. One would be public assistance, again, similar public safety, overtime, very similar circumstances to that debris management. There's not a dollar limit on it at that point. It's open. Individual assistance is a separate thing. That is, it, it's important to remember that someone's insurance is always the first thing, even if there were public, individual assistance, insurance is expected first. Then they, they may come through with individual assistance, it's not to make someone's house whole again. If someone had significant damage, it might be to make it livable again. Individual assistance is very, very rare, and, and I would, just from experience, say unlikely in this circumstance. The other thing that does often come through, though, with those is low or no-interest cost loans for people where they have damage. And those can be really important, as opposed to having to pay, try and get a loan and current interest rates. These are low or no-cost loans that people can get to repair the damage to their homes, and those can, can really be important for both homes and businesses. It comes out of the Small Business Association, so it gets confusing, but those are often eligible for individuals and for businesses. And those only come with a presidential declaration.
That's great, I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Councilmember Kivell, go ahead.
Did you want to go? Okay. You've already acquiesced to the idea that you don't have any problems with the idea of using the alarms that are going to end up going to people deliberately, but they aren't exposed to anything. So they're going to end up being impacted by that. I'm kind of curious if you would go the, the next step and lower that, that threshold and have a, a huge, a campaign to end up getting everybody to immediately, when you hear that, go find out what it actually means. So, because then you could actually have a great day, and you just walked away from thinking that you might end up being in danger and you're not vulnerable, but the other side of the county might end up being, you know, what we endured. So, could you see anybody looking at it in those kinds of terms?
We are always open to reevaluating and reexamining what we're doing. The, the thing that we have to have is data that we can make a decision on. So it's, yes, we, we, we all had the information that there was going to be a storm. Whether that was going to be 50 mile an hour winds or 90 mile an hour winds, that's the, the key point. So trying to find a threshold that people will listen to and accept generally, you know, so that we can, we can be consistent and people know what to expect. So we, we were talking not that long ago, like you said, about an information campaign, people understanding what it means, and there's, there's certainly always room for improvement there, and we have had a lot of talk within the county about that, with our communications department, about how we can get better there.
I mean, the, the, the area that had caused the calamity, seems like that would end up being the thing that you're trying to push through, anybody that's calling up whatever the hotline is or something, and just say, well, this is where this is actually being applied. But, you know, that's, that's the, or the, excuse me, that's the rationale for, for using this lower threshold.
It, it's always worth examining what we're doing, absolutely.
Excuse me.
Councilmember Moser, did you have anything?
No, I think all my questions have been answered.
Yeah, I'm not, certainly not trying to pile on, and I think we're all on the same page here. I'm just wanting to know as much as we can and, and understand the whole process. I got to imagine you probably look at these thresholds annually?
We, we do. Actually, the National Weather Service had pushed up one of their warnings to 75 miles an hour last year.
Right.
We made a conscious decision to, to not change that. We'd been trying to push that message with, when do we activate them already at 70? We really don't like the idea of changing them too often, because that, that makes for an inconsistent message. So that's one of the reasons we didn't go with even actually changing it up higher.
Well, you know, I just can only give you my opinion on the matter and, and hope that you're able to take the data and the video, or the drone video and all that, when you guys look at it again, because it's hard, I get it. I, I don't think everyone understands the sirens. I think it's an unfortunate situation like this, it has to really explain what the cut and dryness of the sirens are. And then you're on the risk of running them when they may not be in imminent danger, and then they don't respect it when they should. So I'm, I'm understanding the juggling process, but I guess what I would ask, and I think we're all asking, is that we'll take this information and the pictures, because I haven't seen all the communities, but I went and walked over Hagadore and Woodland Drive on Saturday, and the fact that no one was hurt or killed is absolute miracle. So, you know, again, I want to thank you for being here today and explaining this to us, because we're all not meteorologists either. So, but we can relay this information to the, to community, and, you know, we'll, we'll keep them informed, and if something changes, I, I think something needs to change, some sort of a carryover signal from county to county. I mean, I, I know you did a really nice job of explaining this to me, but, you know, our community and our friends in the area, Green Oak, Salem, you know, we're all in different counties, too. So it gets a little hairy when all of a sudden you got one county going off, the other county's not going off.
I grew up just a mile the other side, in, in Green Oak Township.
Right.
A lot of family from Salem Township in South Lyon, in Green Oak, so I certainly understand those, those challenges.
Right, and so, you know, you know, that's, that's, I think we've kind of covered everything. We understand it, thankfully, thankfully, we avoided, you know, yes, we've got a lot of property and power's been out and infrastructure took a hit, but we didn't lose anybody. So that's really what matters at the end of the day.
Well, I'm here because it, it does matter to me. The, the job and our responsibility matters to me. It matters to Dave Coulter. He's, every single time after an event like this, and, and not even in just Oakland County, he calls me at 6:00, 6:30 in the morning, asks, does anybody need anything? He does it every time. He did it when Midland happened. So there, there is an, an absolute concern and caring about what's going on in, in all the communities, and that's, that's why he, he calls me with that right away, and it does matter. And it matters to me, too, which is why, why I wanted to, to take the opportunity to come here and give you an opportunity to express your feelings and, and, and tell me what your thoughts are, and we'll take those back. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone got anything on the budget tonight? Okay. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Again, please be sure to state your name and address, and remember our two-minute time limit. All right, we will close the floor for public comment, and we'll move on to the managers' report with city managers. Alny.
Thanks, Mayor. First item I want to address is items related to the Pumpkin Fest Committee. We will have conversations. I spoke with the police chief a little bit about that today, and we'll see if we can get an update from the group there regarding the activities and potentially how we can assist based upon the comments that were brought here this evening. People's Express, again, ready to initiate the new program for People's Express and the transportation services throughout Oakland County. We're working with all the other jurisdictions, where the update is actually going to occur on the increased riders, the costs, the locations. We'll be getting something out by the end of the week. We had discussions through the communities that are involved with South Lyon about getting that out through the senior activity centers, through other locations, through social media and such, to let residents know about the increased services that we're going to be getting with the new contract that the county has with People's Express. The Hagadore Sanitary Sewer and Road Paving Project continues. We're looking at expanding and doing a little bit additional roadwork within that area. We've met with the engineers to start to discuss some additional improvements along Orchard Ridge. There was originally some soil borings that were done in there that indicated a much thicker base, as was discovered when they started removing some of the sanitary sewer. It was not as thick as we had hoped, so we may be increasing an area that we had planned to do an overlay, to actually do a total reconstruction. So I'll be bringing something before council at a later date regarding that improvement of the project. Also discussing about increasing the scope of the project, actually south of 10 Mile, to include an area that was damaged with the water main break a few years ago, right here on the corner of Warren and Liberty, and perhaps going all the way down to McCady Park to conduct, to improve that pavement as well. The trail and sidewalk construction project has been completed, except for the punch less items. You'll start to see the restoration work being done very soon on that. We had the pre-construction meeting on the sanitary sewer underneath the CX railroad. That project is scheduled to begin in early October, and maybe earlier based upon another project that the construction company is working on at the airport. If that gets pushed to a later date, our project will actually start earlier. I'll be updating council on that. We're going out for bid for the crack sealing of the city streets. I'll update council at a meeting coming up and locations where that's going to be, so we get that out to the public. It's not going to be complete shutdown of the streets, it's going to be improving and doing crack sealing to extend the life of the road, certain roads within the community. We're going to continue to do that as part of our efforts to increase the longevity for the roads within, within the community. I mentioned at a prior meeting, we had a planning grant that we worked with Lyon Township, as well as Milford Township. We did receive that grant through SEMCOG, and that has to do more with the safety grant, and that'll include also the recommendations about that crosswalk at 11 Mile that we've been working on with the township to put one at that location. Police chief and I had discussions with the Traffic Improvement Association about those recommendations. They did conduct, conduct a traffic study in that area, and that information will be used along with other data to assist in making that decision on the, the need for that particular sign. Most people know about the potential for the new school cell tower, it's going to be located in the south part of the school property. That meeting is going to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that has been rescheduled for September 6th. We're working on, I've had discussions with six different landscape companies for the landscape work on our city parks, entrance signs and such. Four of the companies, or three of the companies do not want a bid on that. One other company refused to even, even contact back after numerous, numerous conversations or emails back and forth with them, but two of them have expressed an interest. So I'm working with those two companies and developing a bid about what potential they can be doing for the city of South Lyon in the, within the future. And then again, the last thing is just really proud of the staff and the team that we have here at the city in relationship to the, how they reacted to the storm. Everybody worked really well together, and they can continue to work, and we look forward to helping people out wherever we can. So I'll be updating council at a later, later date regarding the information that we receive from the state, where the things go to the federal government. You know, potential is that if it does go to the federal government, you know, the potential is for additional funds, but then there's a lot more requirements through the federal agencies than there is the state agencies. So potentially, it could be a little bit more difficult to get assistance. And that's all I have, and may have to answer any questions.
Councilmember Dilg.
Thank you. I just have a couple things. I wanted to also remark on, and, and compliment you and everyone else on the, the, the way that you, you helped the residents be calm and confident during this emergency. I thought it was really interesting that there wasn't a lot of talk on, on social media about people, people weren't panicking, people weren't bad-mouthing the city. It was more, you know, thanking people for what they were doing. I, I think it was really important that people saw the city come out right away, and police officers, and the, in the fire and, and that, and I think it really helped keep people from, keeping it from getting out of hand. So I appreciate that, and I just wanted to compliment you on that. But I did have a suggestion, and we talked about this during the winter electricity outage, is I still think that we need to have some kind of a plan for a warming, cooling, charging station, if there's something we can do to, to have a plan with schools, churches, the Parks and Rec Building, the library, or something, where we can send people so that they can, you know, you know, that they know that that's kind of a place they can go for that.
And we do have that, and we do have that within our emergency plan. We met immediately on Friday morning with the public safety personnel to discuss that, what are the needs, and went through the plan before even the state emergency was even declared, looking at what potential we may need. Had all the contact information for the churches, for the other locations. Do we need to make contact with them based upon the original assessment that was done? We did not make that contact, so we deemed that that wasn't necessary. But that is included within our plan with the contact, with the locations that we would have, the amount of people that they could potentially have at each one of those locations. So we did review that.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you. And then I just wanted to say that I really appreciated you keeping us informed via text, so we knew what was going on. And I just also wanted to say, it just happened on Thursday, that I just walked the trail before the craziness happened. But that trail, the work they did, is unbelievable. It's gorgeous. So I just wanted to say that, you know, everybody should get out there and take advantage of that part of the trail, because it's really, really great. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy.
So Paul, talking about the expansion on People's Express, do we have a target start date, anything like that?
Well, the start date was announced as September 1, and that will be the expansion of the services. And that was, you know, started to get out through People's Express already, through some of the ridership. But we plan a full-fledged, you know, program to get everything out, additional with flyers and everything else, so people understand what the actual area is for improved services and what some of the changes in cost there are actually going to be. But that flyer was being reviewed by numerous parties, so that's why I have not gotten the most updated one yet. So you'll be getting that this week.
The other one is the CSX project there. Assuming it starts in early October, as you've mentioned, what would be the tentative completion date on that one?
By the end of the year.
By the end of the year, even starting in early October?
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kittle.
You had brought up the idea of Warren getting paved here. Obviously, that intersection needs to be addressed. That's terrible. And the driveway going into McCady Park is horrible, too. That really needs it. And it'd be nice, too, if we could end up extending that sidewalk so that it actually would touch the other sidewalks rather than walking partly into the driveway there. But I mean, when you go out there and look at Warren right now, it's worn, but it's nowhere near worthy of just cutting it up and starting over or any of that. I mean, there are so many streets in the city that are substantially more broken down. I would prefer we look at other areas to be able to use that, whatever that same amount of money would end up going to. I know that you like the savings and scale and all that kind of stuff, but I just don't see that being... I think we should end up making people that have really bad streets get a little bit of that money instead of just kind of putting another Band-Aid on this one.
Yeah, and this wouldn't be a Band-Aid, but this would be a mill and overlay, except for that intersection would be completely rebuilt. The economies of scale does come into play, because we can't really mobilize new equipment and use that bid and relocate that to other subdivisions and have that equipment back and forth. It has to be someplace very close to where we're doing current work. And that was looked at as an area that needed to be done, that we did not have to do sanitary sewer improvements, that we did not have to do any other utility improvements. But that intersection did need to be improved, so we felt that we could rip that out, get that totally reconstructed, mill that other section all the way down to McCady Park, including part of the parking lot, which would come out of a different fund that's not part of the road fund, and then get that completely redone. So that's one of the areas. Depending upon the way the bid, it'd still have to come before council for approval, but that was what we were looking at as a closest spot. There are other locations that we're planning and looking at for other total reconstruction next year. And I think I mentioned about doing some additional inspection of some public utilities just to ensure that we do not have to rip up any of those public utilities after we do the paving. So I will be getting back to you about that.
I look forward to seeing whatever the new pick stuff is going to be. So it seems like I would like to end up seeing that money piled onto that and extend whatever we can do next season. So, yeah, thanks.
I just forgot one thing. I'm really sorry. I did want to talk about, and I can talk with you about this later, but I do want to talk about the Pumpkin Fest footprint. I think that maybe this year this ship has sailed, but in general, I would love to have a conversation at some point about not just Pumpkin Fest, but the Motor Fest and other, even non-city-related events encroaching on those, on the street where there's houses. And I've talked to people besides the Christmas house, but other people who say that they are people that come onto their lawn and they throw garbage and they, you know, they just, you know, they feel like they've lost, you know, any control over their lawn. So I would love to, as a council, have us discuss that at some point, you know, if we have these events, if we can keep them to the city, you know, to the downtown area. You know, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but...
Yeah, I think it's important, and this one was brought up and brought by the Pumpkin Fest Committee to discuss, and we met with them several times. But council certainly can bring up that and discuss that and ask, you know, to shorten the footprint of the event so it does not encroach on some of those residents. Because they have, as the event gets bigger and better every year, it's trying, it doesn't necessarily mean better for residents. It's just expanding and allowing more public events to take place. So council, at any given time, if that's the position that you'd like to take as a policy, then we certainly can, as staff, to look at and say, no, we're not getting any bigger. Bigger doesn't necessarily mean better. We just want to have a good, exciting, you know, fun event, you know, with certain limitations on it. We can certainly do that.
Yeah, I think in a future agenda, I would love to talk about that in general as a council. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurzweil.
Yeah, real quick, on that same vein, I think it's important that we do actively address Mrs. Duncan's concerns, because there are concerns of mine, too. I wouldn't want thousands of people trespassing on my property and worrying whether or not there was going to be a slip and fall, and then finding out a month later, I'm the defendant in 17 lawsuits because everybody was over there falling and slipping, and figures that the city owns it, so the city has deep pockets, so it's to the city. Oh, it's not the city. It's a private residence. So I think this is a concern to address sooner rather than later. And I don't know why Pumpkin Fest could not pull back on that one area. It doesn't seem to be that big of an area, but it frees up at least part of their boundary line. And maybe the other part of the boundary line, we could put barriers up, something. I don't know. At least for this year. But there has to be a solution, because quite frankly, it just is not fair. It's not fair.
Or any of them. Motor Fest, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Councilmember Kittle.
I wonder, could we entertain the idea of having a conversation about them forming a crew that would end up making sure that everything was put back to just the way it was before the event? You know, I mean, it doesn't get them off the hook for a lawsuit, I suppose. But nonetheless, if it's a matter of their property being damaged as a product of people just walking all over their grass and that, you know, maybe they could end up putting a crew together, just rake things out and make sure all the debris is gone.
Anyone else got anything for the city manager tonight? All right, we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Moser, go ahead.
Okay. Well, first, thanks to Paul for keeping us all informed of everything that was going on with the storms. Second, admin, police, fire, DPW, water and sewer were the epitome of every employer's dream for a staff. I mean, DPW was out all weekend long. Police and fire were out immediately. And I don't think anybody was left out of this fray. So thanks to everybody. You did a great job. Hopefully, we can continue to get this place cleaned up. It's just such a mess over by us. And one of the things, I think it's a good thing that came of this, is the camaraderie between our neighbors. I mean, we all got out and helped each other. It was like, oh, you need a hand, or you need some gas for your generator? Oh, you need a generator? You know, it was just that whole kind of an atmosphere there over the weekend, even though we were all kind of, you know. I didn't get it as bad as some. And I do know it could have been a lot worse. And thank God, we didn't lose anybody. Like you said, in the end, that's what matters. But it was something that brought the community together. I'm not sure if I'm saying this correctly or not, but...
I think everyone's following you.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Moser. Councilmember Kittle.
Oh, well, with all the mayhem that had taken place, it was good to see everybody pitching in and helping their neighbors and that. And the fact that, no matter what it was, people seemed to have a boyed kind of understanding that we got through this and we'll end up being whole again. It's just a matter of time. So I think that's really cool, and it's, I think that's kind of been our backbone around South Lyon. I was enjoying the, you know what, I'm just going to stop talking.
That was good. Councilmember Kittle.
There's other people that can talk.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Just to take off of those, basically, I want to take the opportunity to thank each of the city's departments and their employees for their Herculean efforts over the past several days, starting with the city's administration, the city's DPW department, the South Lyon Fire and Police Departments, and the city's Water and Wastewater Departments. Each department's employees went above and beyond to help restore normalcy to our city. We're not totally there yet, but we will be because of these individuals. So thank you on my behalf and on behalf of the residents of our city. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurzweil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to ditto what everybody is saying, thanking everybody, including those workers that came in from out of state. I want to thank those workers who showed up that could have had other things to do this weekend with the families, but they came to a small town in Oakland County, and they helped us through a very, very horrific event. So thank you to all the outstate workers that came to South Lyon. We're a great community, and thank you. I'm going to move on a little bit to a fun event, and I'm going to sort of backtag on to Mr. Ludbetter when he was here. A great event is coming up on September 9 and 10, and it starts on September 9 with the Depot Days, and that runs until 5 o'clock in the evening. And last year, we found out that everybody from Depot Days at 5 o'clock walked across the parking lot and came into St. Joe's for, guess what, the Polish Heritage Festival that had a little bit of rain. Well, you know what? It rained, it would stuck, too. But anyway, so what we have is the Polish Heritage Festival, New and Improved, that is coming up on September 9 and 10. Why is it more, better and improved? The beer tent is larger, so if it rains, there's more room to sit underneath. There's a change in menu. We were blessed last year and blessed this year. The volunteers are coming out of the woodwork for this event. This is not an event that's having a problem getting volunteers, and they're coming from all over the community. This is a community event. There's a lot of people in this town that are Polish. There is a new tent coming in that will sit between 500 and 600 people coming in. It's going to be huge. And I'm telling you, it's just phenomenal what is going on this year. So we had a learning curve last year, but this is a community event. So anybody in town, please come and join the Polish Heritage Event. It starts on September 9, 5 o'clock. A lot of polka, a lot of pierogies, and a lot of, just a great opportunity to sit down with your neighbors and talk about the storm. So come and join us, everybody in the community. And this is, the location is St. Joseph's Parish, right off of Pontiac Trail. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. Councilmember Hanson.
I definitely want to echo a lot of what my colleagues have already said. I want to thank our city manager personally, the communication leadership, especially with all the city staff working together. I was very moved to see everything falling into place like it should. DPW, police, fire, the level of calmness, even on social media, was palpable. And it was great to see everything really fall into place. So definitely thank you for the level of communication extended to council, as well as the leadership and all of our city staff boots on the ground. It was great to see, you know, considering the circumstances. Definitely wanted to also thank Jason Morgan and even Kelly Breen, who both personally reached out to a lot of the city council staff, and I believe in the city hall staff to see what we needed, what they could do to bring additional support to us. So, you know, even though Kelly Breen isn't representing the city anymore, she still has us in her thoughts. So that was pretty moving to see. Change of topic a little bit from the storm that we had last week. On the 19th of August, we had the Fury for a Feast. Kudos to the Witches Hat staff, volunteers, and all the folks that attended. I think this might be actually a record. They raised almost, it is a record, yes. So $23,990 for Blessings in a Backpack of South Lyon, as well as Active Faith. They raised a half a ton of food, 1,043 pounds of food for both of these great organizations. So kudos to Aaron and Ryan and their staff at the Witches Hat, and congratulations to Active Faith and Blessings in a Backpack. I hope to see us top that goal even next year. So, thank you.
Councilmember Dill.
All of what they said. And then also, I just wanted to say, though, one thing is that I didn't mention was, I really appreciate the decision to go ahead with the farmer's market. I don't know if that was a wondering if you were going to do that or not. But the farmer's market was actually really cool. Really felt like one of those post-apocalyptic things where everybody kind of comes together, and everybody was there just kind of talking, getting coffee, which was nice. So I thought it was really kind of a cathartic thing to do. So I'm glad that we decided to go ahead and do that. I think that was really great. And then I just wanted to mention, our businesses over the years have just keep taking hits. And so, you know, several of our businesses, you know, our retail businesses were out for, you know, several days. And I know a lot of people lost money in this, so I'm not talking to you. But if anybody else can support our businesses, get out there and help them out a little bit as they reopen. I think that they would really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I obviously echo everything everyone was saying up here. I think the thing that stuck with me most was, one, the gentleman from Oakland County, and thank you again for being here. That was great. You know, you always wish and hope that you're in a situation like that, that your staff and your administration team and everyone across the board can work well together like that. So kudos to police, fire, DPW, our city manager, the city staff at the administration building for being ready to go. You know, you don't want that to ever happen, but when it does, our staff here at the city seem to be ready to handle it and in a very professional manner. So, thank you. You know, with that, I really don't, oh, I want to remind everyone that kids are back to school next Tuesday, so everyone enjoy your Labor Day weekend, but be safe out there and, you know, make sure we're watching for the kids out there on the streets. So I won't be looking for a motion to adjourn tonight. We are going to be looking for a motion to go into closed session. Councilmember Kurzweil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to go into a closed session pursuant to Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268, at the request of the city manager to conduct a performance evaluation.
I'll support.
City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kittle?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Everyone just go ahead and take a minute for a breather. I want to make sure that we've got our situation with the video stuff taken care of before we start a closed session, okay?